It is five o'clock and we will call the meeting to order. First item is invocation by Reverend John Ipsada from First Christian Church. Reverend Ipsada, thank you for being with us tonight.
Would you pray with me? Gracious and loving God, we pause for just a moment in our busy lives to give thanks. This is a week of giving thanks and we have much to be thankful for. Tonight, we express our thanks especially for those who serve us. For police and firefighters. For people who haul our garbage and recycle our trash. For those who answer telephones and answer questions. Who sit in offices and fill out spreadsheets. Those who speak on our behalf to the newspapers. And those who serve on this commission and in their support. We are fortunate that there are individuals who will do the work that is difficult. To make the decisions that are hard. Keeping always the best interest of our community before us. They take heat when we are unwilling to. And for that, we are truly thankful that they are being deserved. Blessed their meeting today. And each time they meet with a spirit of peace and cooperation. A spirit of always, in every conversation, when sides are being chosen. That the side that is chosen are the people of Frankfurt. Be with us in this week as we celebrate. And we pray in the name of the one who is holy. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Ipsada. Next will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Here.
Mr. Haynes.
Here.
Mr. Bowers.
Here.
Mr. Hayden.
Here.
Mayor May.
Here, we do have a quorum present and would next would be approval of the minutes from October 14th work session, October 28th regular meeting, November 13th, I'm sorry, November 4th, 2013 special meeting.
I move for approval for those three. October 14th work session, October 28th regular meeting, and November 4th special meeting.
Move back Commissioner Haynes.
Second.
Second back Commissioner Bowers. Any discussion, CNN clerk please call.
Mr. Rush.
Yes.
Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
Mr. Hayden.
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, those items are approved. Next item, we have ceremonial items, this is the point where we recognize outstanding contributions or special contributions or awards. And tonight, we have a few. Item 2.1, we're representing, recognizing our public works employees Trey Toxell and Kevin Meriwether for placing third in the National Garbage Truck Driving Competition. We've had a series of great drivers in the city and every year, our folks are always in the top, top places. In this year, we're pleased to recognize Trey and Kevin for their third place finish. And Tom Bradley is going to come forward and make some remarks. Thank you guys, as always.
The two gentlemen that are here tonight and competed along with a third gentleman in Denton, Texas for the Nationals. Trey and Kevin were both third place in their categories nationally. And we're very proud of them. They placed high in the state and went on to Nationals. So last year, if you recall, we had a first place national winner. So we're doing something right.
Absolutely. Congratulations, thank you all. Thank you all. And I know they won some trophies and plaques and...
Yes, it's in Texas, so they got that one.
So, see those later. And then one year up, we sent our folks to the national competition and it was in Lexington. So at least it was better than having to drive over and do this. You got a little time to get ready for it. But congratulations, continuing our tradition of having great drivers here. And I've seen them continuously amazing what these folks can do with these trucks. And next item is 2.2. This is recognition of Police Chaplain Daniel Wilson for service to the community and to the officers of the Frankfurt Police Department. Chaplain Wilson is resigning from the chaplaincy. I know the chief's going to come forward and I have something also and we'll say, I had the pleasure, when I was mayor, previously, we started the chaplain program back then and Reverend Hartung and Reverend Wilson were among the first three that we swore in. So it's been, I don't know how many...
Ten.
Ten years, just flown by. But Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you Mayor, Board. My predecessor, Chief Evans, created or had the idea, the genesis of the idea for the chaplaincy program. It's a volunteer, all volunteer outfit. These gentlemen have volunteered to minister to the police officers and their families, also to the community at large. You know, oftentimes, police officers are asked to be so many different things, different people, social workers, whatever. We're in a lot of different situations. Some were equipped for, some were not. These gentlemen have helped us measurably throughout the years. And in appreciation of service, Chaplain Wilson is, he's not leaving his church, but he's leaving the Frankfurt area. He moved out of the county, so he wouldn't be able to devote the time that he felt was necessary to the police department. Like I said, these guys volunteer. They come out and ride with the officers. They come to roll calls. They just sit and listen. In fact, I've often said this and I almost hate to say it, but they know that they're accepted when the officers will still cuss in front of them. So, you know. But our men and women feel comfortable, just have a debt of gratitude for all that you've done for us and we appreciate it. Your wife Brenda's here. Do you have any other family members?
No, that's all.
Okay. And on behalf of the Frankfurt Police Department, I want to present you with your badge and your cross and your name tag.
I appreciate that.
For grateful appreciation for 10 years' services, Police Chaplain of the Frankfurt Police Department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Wilson, we also have a certificate for you from the city that recognizes you for your 10 years and eight months of outstanding service. And Brenda, thank you for sharing him and supporting him at home. It's a tough, tough job. I know, I can remember one time having to go to the state Capitol and find someone and tell them someone had a death and knowing how difficult that is. But having you there makes, and you Reverend Hartung and the others, makes it so much easier for all of our folks and for all of us that have to endure those hardships. And our folks that are on the street need extra help sometimes. They get support at home from the family, but it's always good to have someone, someone else to talk to that they can share things with. And we deeply appreciate your service. And again, you all have been there from day one and thanks to the chief for continuing to support the program and all the officers and folks in our community. On behalf of all of us, we deeply appreciate that service. That's a special calling, we appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Mayor.
We also have another item. We will be making a promotion in the fire service. Ryan Fisher will be promoted from captain to battalion chief. We'll call in Chief Hayden to come forward and make some remarks and then we'll have Captain Fisher come forward with his family and make him officially a battalion chief. So Chief?
Mayor, Board, I want to present Ryan tonight for promotion. He started the Frankfurt Fire Department in April of 2000. I had the pleasure of working with him right when he started. Ryan's always been a good employee and a solid person to count on. He served our department as a quality fire officer and I have no doubt he will be a fine battalion chief for our department. And he's already stepped into the role. We had a vacancy in the position. He's already doing the job. And from what I've seen, it's going to be, it's going to be a good thing.
And thanks to your family for all the support you give at home and Chief Fisher, Captain Fisher will soon be chief. Just one of our shining stars in our department. Opportunity to swear in someone and then 13 years later become battalion chief is stellar. We deeply appreciate that continued service. So I'm very honored to be able to pin this battalion chief. Can I join you? When your wife and there comes a big fire moment. She does... Sometimes bend those. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry.
Congratulations.
Good gracious.
Hey buddy.
That's right. Here, let him shake his hand. He got high five. You got another one? Good job. Keep up the good work.
He did know what to do. That's good.
All right, thank you, congratulations, Chief. And thank you all for being here to support our honorees. Item number three is citizen comments. This is the time when we allow citizens to come forward and discuss any item that they may have. Before doing that, I'd recognize that former City Commissioner Russ Kennedy, who's with us tonight, thank you for your years of service, many years of being on the city commission. You know what it's like to be up here now. You get to come back tonight and participate as a citizen, which is great. But this is the time when folks, if you want to come up and make comments or ask questions about issues, we allow five minutes. And then the city attorney will keep the time. And when you get close to about 30 seconds or so, I'll just give you a sign or say you're almost up. And then if you could keep that to five minutes, we deeply appreciate that. I always hate to cut people off, but we have to follow our rules and that way allows people to have time to participate. So if anyone likes to come, would like to come forward, just state your name, you have to add your address, just state your name and what you're here to talk about and we'll take a listen. Can we just ask for your name for the record, for the city clerk?
Yes, my name is Nikolai Pennington. I live here in Frankfurt. And one thing that I've been wanting to bring up for the past couple of years, I used to live in Southern California. And one thing that I've noted in Southern California, that when you enter a business that would have an entrance of double doors, that on the top of the double doors, it would, they would have a sign or a placard that says, "These doors to remain unlocked during business hours." And I've noticed that here in Kentucky and in Frankfurt, that when you try to enter a pair of double doors, typically, one of them will always be locked for some inexplicable reason. And I just find this to be a fire hazard and a security hazard and a safety hazard in the event that there is a fire or in the event, in this day and age, that there is a shooting. I just think that all doors should be accessible to exit a building. If that's something that could be possibly looked at, to where doors should be unlocked during business hours, I think that would be fantastic and could be a possible help.
Do we have an ordinance that addresses anything like that at all?
There's some fire codes. I don't know if you want to call, let's see, Chief Hayden, you're here tonight. If you wouldn't mind, Commissioner Bowers would like to ask if you could give her a quick answer to what the fire code is in terms of exit doors.
Just if we have any...
My knowledge, those doors should be unlocked.
They should be, so they should be doing that anyway.
Fire inspection, that's something we could check at that time.
Okay.
Whether a business at times when we're not doing inspection chooses to lock one or not, may be beyond our control.
Do you think we could do some non-scheduled inspections? If they're supposed to remain unlocked, then could we do something to enforce that by doing some inspection? POP inspections, if you will, to ensure that that's happening?
That'd probably be something likely could be done. I know when we go to patronize a business or, you know, even myself off duty, if I see something like that, I bring it to their attention. And I'm sure most of us are, I mean, we can definitely put out a memo for that to happen.
And maybe we could, I don't know, Mr. City Manager, maybe we could, well, we can tell the public if we determine that we want to do that through a meeting like this and on the website, that we want those to remain open all the time.
I mean, I would even go as far to say that...
Not all the time, but during business hours.
Correct. But I would even go as far to say that the majority in Frankfurt, the majority of double doors, one half of those double doors will always be locked with that side latch.
I think I've seen what you've seen too, so...
Yeah, and I just don't understand it. I mean, and like I said, in a shooting, when you need to egress or in a fire, if you want to get out quickly and you come across a locked door, I mean, that split second is sometimes all it needs to take for you to not be able to exit the building. And like I said, in California, they actually have signs over the doors that said, "These doors to remain unlocked during business hours."
Well, could we then just post something on the website and then make an announcement tonight in that we could so choose to go out and do POP inspections and just so the public will remember to do that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good idea. And just for, our fire marshal does do inspections on all businesses.
Those are scheduled inspections, correct?
They are scheduled, but in most cases, they're not.
Okay.
All right, so if anyone sees that, please, you know, feel free to report it to us and we can pass that information along to our fire inspectors. Thank you.
Please.
Anyone else? Oh, okay.
Yeah, thank you, good evening. My name's David Stumbo, I live in Frankfurt. I'd like to ask the board to consider the Swim Play Frankfurt facility. I believe you've discussed it at previous meetings. I'd just like to put my endorsement in for the facility as a citizen. Just this weekend, I went to Lexington for an indoor soccer game. Three months out of the year, it's not suitable in Kentucky to play outside very much. So we went to Lexington and bought dinner there, went to the movies there, randomly bought gas there, perhaps, and left our money somewhere else besides Frankfurt. I know the board is considering a couple of other options as far as our local facilities go. With all due respect, the other plan I've seen is more of a Band-Aid and I think we need to invest. At the last meeting I went to, it was, you know, mentioned that we want to keep Frankfurt homey and nice and I'm totally with that. I live in South Frankfurt, I like to be able to walk the streets, I like to know my neighbors. But you can be ignorant of the demographics and we need to be able to grow our facilities in order to get growth in Frankfurt. So I'll just close and ask that you support this proposal. Thanks.
Thank you for being here. Anyone else? All right, next item is, we'll move into, sorry, Commissioner Bowers?
What if you can appropriate time to ask that, under the items on the consent agenda, be able to be talked about separately?
Which one?
Well, it's 7.4.
Okay. If someone wants to make a motion to remove an item from the consent, we can certainly do that.
Send an email to make a motion this week to move that as well.
See, you have two of us, so...
I voted for it too.
So we would all like to...
If there's no objection, we'll take 7.4 off and move it to, let's see, under Old Business, where would it be?
7.1.
Okay, so it'd be 9.1 under Old Business? If there's no objections, then that will be off the consent calendar. 7.4 will be discussed under Old Business. Commissioner?
Well, since we're on that flow, could, I'd ask that we take 7.2 off and discuss that under Old Business.
Anyone else have any objections to that? So 7.2 will also be under, let's see.
That would be 9.1?
9.2.
And for those watching, those items regard to 7.2 being the fee rates for Jennifer Hills and 7.4 being in regard to the Family Aquatic Center and a professional service agreement for that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, any other? Okay. Next item would be second reading of ordinances. And the first one is 4.1. I would ask the solicitor to read it by title and summary, then entertain any motion thereof.
4.1 by title, an ordinance amending Frankfurt Code of Ordinances, Chapter 52, Section 52.04, Paragraph A1, charges. Summary, this ordinance defers the scheduled January 1, 2014 rate increase to January 1, 2015, and deletes the minimum charge for the increase due to the Consumer Price Index.
Any discussion?
I move adoption.
Move back Commissioner Bowers.
Second.
Second back Commissioner Roach.
That's mine, it doesn't matter.
Okay. Any discussion? CNN clerk, please call.
Mr. Rush.
Yes.
Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
Mr. Hayden.
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, item 4.1 is adopted. Next item is 4.2. And if the solicitor would read it by title and summary only, then I'll entertain a motion of questions.
By title, an ordinance amending Section 37.31, Pay Plan, Classification and Compensation of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances. Summary, this ordinance amends Section 37.31 of the Code of Ordinances to change the name of the position of Wet Weather Coordinator Engineer to Water Quality Engineer, and this is the second reading.
Move for adoption.
Move back Commissioner Haynes.
Second.
Second back Commissioner Roach. Any discussion? CNN clerk, please call.
Mr. Rush.
Yes.
Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
Mr. Hayden.
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, 4.2 is adopted. Next item is 4.3, and I'd ask the solicitor to read it by title and summary only.
This is also second reading by title, an ordinance regulating nuisances within the City of Frankfurt and amending Sections 150.05, 36.015, 36.016, 36.017, 36.018, 36.019, 36.020, 36.021, 36.022, 36.023, 36.024, 36.025, and 36.026 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances, Property Maintenance Code. And by summary, this ordinance, which amends Section 150.05, 36.015, 36.016, 36.017, 36.018, 36.019, 36.020, 36.021, 36.022, 36.023, 36.024, 36.025, and 36.026 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances, and which takes effect on January 1, 2014, provides for the enactment of a nuisance code and the creation of a nuisance hearing board. Effective January 1, 2014, the nuisance code shall take the place of the property maintenance code, except for violations that were cited on or before December 31, 2013.
Okay, any questions about this item? Are you ready for adoption?
My name is Joseph.
Those are separate. But if you have a question about that, that's fine.
I'll move adoption.
Okay, move back Commissioner Bowers.
Second.
Second back Commissioner Haynes. Any further discussion? CNN clerk, please call.
Mr. Rush.
Yes.
Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
Mr. Hayden. I did have a question, but you moved pretty quick there, Mayor. I'm sorry.
Well, we're in roll call now, so I'm sorry.
So I'll just vote no, you got three yeses?
Yes, we do.
Mayor May.
Yes, item's adopted. Okay, Commissioner Hayden, did you want to ask a question about it?
Don't worry about it.
Okay. Let's see, item 4.4, the solicitor to read by title and summary only.
4.4, second reading, and this is going to take a while.
Yes.
An ordinance of the City of Frankfurt, Kentucky, providing for the issuance of the city sewer system revenue bonds, Series 2013, for the purposes of financing the costs of municipal sanitary sewer service facilities and related costs, appropriating existing sewer system funds for such purpose, setting forth the terms and conditions upon which the Series 2013 bonds are to be, and additional parity bonds may be issued and secured, providing for the collection, segregation, and distribution of the income, revenues, and funds of the sanitary sewer system of the city, providing for the rights of the holders of the Series 2013 bonds and the enforcement thereof, and providing for an advertised public competitive sale of the Series 2013 bonds. By summary, Paragraph 1, for the purpose of providing funds to pay a portion of the city's cost of acquisition, construction, and installation of major municipal sanitary sewer improvements, the project, funding a debt service reserve and paying related costs, the city authorizes the sale and issuance of its $9,995,000, subject to adjustment, sewer system revenue bonds, Series 2013, the 2013 bonds, to be payable from the revenues of the city's sanitary sewer wastewater system, the system. The 2013 bonds are scheduled to mature on December 1, 2014 through December, through 2038, and will bear interest semi-annually at rates established by competitive bidding. The form of the 2013 bonds, provisions with respect to registration, authentication, transfer, and exchange of 2013 bonds, and provisions relating to the appointment and duties of a paying agent and bond registrar are set out in detail in the ordinance. The 2013 bonds will be issued initially in book entry form and will be special and limited obligations of the city payable solely from the revenues of the system. Up to $3,090,000 of existing available sewer system funds are also appropriated for the above purposes. Paragraph 2, system revenues will be collected in a revenue fund and then deposited monthly to a bond fund, which includes a reserve account for the payment and security of the 2013 bonds and outstanding parity bonds, and then to an operation and maintenance fund and a depreciation fund for the system. The city covenants to levy and collect sufficient rates and charges for the use of the system to meet all costs of the system and to preserve the financial integrity and security of the 2013 bonds. Additional parity bonds may be issued upon meeting a coverage test, net revenues over debt service. The city will provide for the insurance of the system, in part account for all revenues, and have annual audits. Additional covenants are made with respect to the operation of the system as a revenue-producing public project and certain tax rules with respect to the 2013 bonds, all for the benefit of the bondholders. Paragraph 3, a separate construction fund of the city for the deposit administration, investment, and disbursement of net proceeds of the 2013 bonds to pay costs of the project is authorized. Four, terms are provided for a public competitive sale of the 2013 bonds, sale documents are approved. The foregoing provisions are intended to be a summary of the ordinance and references hereby made to the full text of the ordinance for a full and complete statement of its contents. The full text of this ordinance is available for public inspection during the normal City of Frankfurt business hours in the office of the city clerk, 315 West Second Street, Frankfurt, Kentucky.
Heard the summary. Any questions on this item? If not, you're ready for a motion?
Make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Move back Commissioner Hayden.
Second.
Second back Commissioner Haynes. Any further discussion? CNN clerk, please call.
Mr. Rush.
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes.
Yes.
Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
Mr. Hayden.
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, item 4.4 is approved. Next item, we have an order, 5.1, he's in order adopting the policy governing the inspection of public records of the City of Frankfurt. This just puts in place a procedure to follow when folks request to review and obtain copies of city records. And this all will be filed in the city clerk's office. We will have a placard or something established to post in city hall, so folks will understand that. If there's no further questions, would ask, would entertain a motion to...
Move for approval.
Move back Commissioner Haynes.
Second.
Second back Commissioner Hayden. Any further discussion? CNN, clerk, please call.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, item is approved. Don't have any resolutions tonight. Next item would be consent calendar, remind that seven point two and seven point four have been removed. Call the city manager for reading of the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, first item, seven point one, is accept the fiscal two thousand twelve, thirteen audit as prepared by Mountjoy Chilton and reviewed by the commission on November eighteen. Item seven point three is to approve the park and recreation rate schedule for two thousand fourteen. There are no proposed changes in the rates for two thousand fourteen as recommended by the Park and Recreation Board. Item seven point five is to award a one point one, one seven, point seven one six contract that does include a twenty percent contingency to Conhurst LLC for stormwater installation in the Crestwood subdivision, subdivision, excuse me. Conhurst was the low of two bids. Item seven point six is a two-year contract with Cintas to provide uniformed service for our Public Works Department. The contract is from one, one fourteen through twelve, thirty-one, fifteen, and is estimated at twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars per year. Item seven point seven is change order number five, decreasing the contract with Schroeder Construction by fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars and twelve cents, with a revised contract amount of three million, five hundred ninety-two thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. The change order adjusts for the final quantities that included additional gravity main and, well, additional work. Item seven point eight is change order number one for thirty-four thousand, five hundred eighty-four dollars and sixty-three cents, with fashioned construction that includes one hundred and twenty feet of ductile iron pipe, one additional manhole, and additional, and several additional gabion baskets due to unexpected site conditions. The revised contract amount is five hundred sixty-six thousand, five hundred eighty-four dollars and sixty-three cents. This was related to the Ridgeview Pump Station. Item seven point nine is award a sixty-six thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollar construction contract to Walter Martin Excavating to install eleven hundred feet of force main and a manhole in the Glenns Creek, on Glenns Creek Road. The contract includes seventy-nine hundred dollar alternate to provide a private sewer that will be reimbursed by the property owner. Item seven point ten is a forty thousand dollar purchase of Solvay chemicals to provide effluent disinfection at the wastewater treatment plant in order to remain within Kentucky pollution discharge standards. Item seven point one-one is to surplus a two thousand three mower as a twenty-five hundred dollar trade-in on a two thousand fourteen model with a net cost of six thousand, one hundred dollars. The purchase is through the state contract. And item seven point twelve is personnel issues. The first is a promotion of Ryan Fisher in the fire department, promotion from captain to fire battalion chief, effective eleven, twenty-six, thirteen. The next is a resignation of Paul Scott in our Public Works Department, effective ten, thirty, thirteen. We also have an appointment of Justin Thurman, Public Works Tech One, Sanitation, effective eleven, twenty-six, thirteen. We have a transfer, voluntary demotion of Joe Sanderson from Tech Three in Sanitation to Tech Two in the Streets Department, effective twelve, three, thirteen. Next, we have four firefighter one appointments, all are on December third. They are Patrick Sword, Whitney Nichols, Andrew Feagle, John Penfeld, and finally, we have an appointment of Lori Gruber, Parks and Rec, effective twelve, thirty, thirteen. She will be our new Parks and Forestry Arbivist.
Thank you. We've heard the reading of the consent calendar. Entertain a motion and say that all members present will be considered to have voted in the affirmative on the consent calendar unless they file vote verification forms with the city clerk, and they don't believe they're ready. So, entertain a motion for final passage of consent calendar.
I'll make a motion.
Move back Commissioner Roach.
Second.
Second back Commissioner Hayden. All those items are approved. Thank you. Next item, we have some board appointments. Eight point one is Architecture Review Board, and I'd like to request the appointment of Ann Austin Wright to a three-year term for Architecture Review Board, ending September twelfth, twenty sixteen. And also, that would require a motion, and also, prior to this meeting, had signed forms to appoint three folks to the Human Rights Commission, being Singer Buchanan, Christine Libby, and Dawn Hale. And after speaking with one of our commission members, it was brought to my attention that maybe some members weren't aware that the way the ordinance was passed previously, that there was, these appointments were direct mayor appointments. So, with that being the case, I held up to make sure that if there's a problem with, if the commission has problems with others, we'd be more than happy to adjust if needed or if you want to leave it like it is. I still wanted to hold up just to make sure that, out of respect for commission input on that. But I will, with the motion I appoint one.
I would just ask that after we do these appointments, that I believe there are still positions open on the Human Rights Commission and the Ethics Commission, and so if we could just announce to the public, if you're interested in serving on the Ethics Board or the Human Rights Commission, that you contact the mayor with the resume, because I think as it stands right now, we're not going to even, if something were to come up tomorrow, we don't have a full board. We don't even have enough for a quorum, I guess, if the board is not complete. So, we need four people for the Human Rights Commission, and we need, is it three for the Ethics Board?
There'll be two that are due in December.
Two people for the Ethics Board?
Because that's what we added to.
So, if we had an ethics violation complaint now, we wouldn't be able to handle it, would we?
We do.
Well, it might be difficult with one person being absent. So, I think we need to fill those as quickly as we can. If, if people could email the mayor or contact the mayor if you're interested in those.
Thank you.
And then I will just make the motion that we approve your recom, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I'm just going, go ahead. I think on the Human Rights Commission, I'd like to know if you all helped me on the process. I'd like to see if there's support to amend the ordinance so that commission has approval on that, because when we discuss that issue, now, it seems to me that that's sort of what, I thought that during our discussion, we said that the commission had approval, but I could be mistaken. But anyway, I'd like to see where we are on that. I think we should have approval on that.
We do have approval. The mayor recommends...
No, we don't.
Oh.
No, ma'am. Not under the way the ordinance was written.
Okay.
That's why I wanted to stop.
That's why he stopped, and because I'd like to see us amend that ordinance so the commission has approval.
I would like to see that too, but I think we have to go, we have to, we have to move on this action first, and then that could come later, right? So, or, oh, you want to approve, you want to, okay.
I'd like to, I'd like to amend the ordinance so that the commission has the approval power on Human Rights Commission appointments.
Well, I guess functionally, that's what we're doing tonight, even if it's not according to ordinance. If you need a motion to accept your recommendation...
No, I mean, there's not even motion to, he's just letting us know, because that's our, it's, it's, under the current ordinance...
But with the Architectural Review Board, we do.
Right, that's right.
So, I'm going to make the motion that we approve that one.
Okay.
The appointment to the Architectural Review Board, and although one of my very good friends had wanted to serve on that board, let me say I apologize, because I told you that I would support you if the mayor recommended you, and, but the mayor did not recommend, so I'm also supporting this person. So, I move your, I move that we accept your recommendation.
Okay. Move back Commissioner Bowers.
Second.
Second back Commissioner Haynes. Any discussion? CNN, clerk, please call.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, thank you. And just to go back to Commissioner Roach, just so you will know, we'd already signed these appointments, and after Commissioner Roach called to my attention or asked a question, I didn't know how the rest of the commission felt, so rather than call, I thought it would be better to discuss it in open forum. If, if you have problems with the way we passed the ordinance, we would take two readings.
Well, the ordinance will take two readings. So, it would be, I agree with Commissioner Roach, I would like to have approval power, which means that we can't do anything tonight with these, because the ordinance has to be amended.
Right. And I will, if the majority of the commission feels that way, I will hold up on the other appointments, so you can review those. I won't make appointments until the commission, if that's what the majority wants to do, I can go either way on it.
Well, I'm fine with these, these recommended people, I'm fine with, but I agree with Commissioner Roach. So, I guess it's whatever the board wants to do tonight, but I think that it requires a motion to amend it, so I would say...
We'll have to, yeah, we'll have to get a, get the solicitor's draft, and we can have it on the next agenda. And if there's a rush, we can call, we can do a special meeting and go ahead and get that, if, if the commission can get together.
I just...
To do that.
You can move that we amend it to say that, and then we could, then...
I just, I move we amend it, and if we go over to the next meeting, I'm fine with going ahead with the three, three appointments that you have, Mayor, and then we just go with the new process on the remaining ones.
I second that.
Okay, move back Commissioner Roach, second back Commissioner Bowers. Is there any discussion? CNN, clerk, please call.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes, and I will just say, Mayor, I think that that takes a little bit of the pressure off of you, because it's all five of us making that approval, and the weight's not all on your shoulders, so, yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, and just to say, I think that was the language that was taken out of the previous ordinance, I believe, if I can remember correctly.
You know, that, that language was in there from the get-go, so...
It was in there, so. It's easy, when we're dealing with something that, that lengthy, it is difficult. So, I will hold up until the commission has a chance to change that, if that's okay. And we may do, piggyback that on to a work session, if that's okay, to go ahead and expedite it, then...
But these three people are appointed at this time.
Right, because I had already signed, whenever that was, forms prior.
I don't.
But, I met with Commissioner Roach on Friday.
And so, if anybody else wants to serve, we need four more people.
And I'm trying to balance, I try to balance, I've got two that I need to talk to for Commissioner Roach. I try to balance the boards based on so many different things.
Right.
All right, well, thank you, commissioners. Let's see, next item, nine point one, will be the discussion of the item that was formerly seven point four. This would be to approve a professional services agreement with Branstad or Carroll with the Family Aquatic Center, and authorized, you may sign all the related documents. And the reason, I think, so folks will know, there may be some confusion as to not, whether or not we're voting tonight to move forward with a specific center or not a center. And what the commission had talked about in our joint meeting in October was, we would support a letter sent to the governor and legislative leaders, or whoever need to be on that, that we would support requesting funding for the larger project, the indoor center that was proposed through Swim Play Frankfurt, and that if that funding does not become available, then the city wanted to move forward with the recommendations of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, which recommended, still moving forward, a family aquatic center, because Jennifer Hills Pool is in such needed repair. It's forty, fifty years old, which equate our Parks Board and Parks Department, folks, is probably a little bit beyond the life cycle on that type of facility. And so, the commission tonight is not voting to support or not support the large proposal or to any specific proposal. This just allows the architectural engineering to proceed as if we are going to build something one way or the other, and if, and if it, if we do not get the funding, which we hope, we all hope that we will get funding from the state for a larger project. But if we don't, we felt it was imperative on us to move forward with something that the city could, could do, and not to have to close Jennifer Hills. If we don't do something, Jennifer Hills Pool will not be usable, and we can, we have our Parks Director and our Parks Board members here that can answer specific questions. We just wanted to clarify that. I think everybody on the commission supports requesting funding through the governor and legislature. And, so that's, that's what this is. And we'll have a chance for people to, to ask questions of our Parks staff and board members. Commissioner Bowers?
I see Steve Brooks back there, so I'm wondering if he's going to talk to us. I think that, well...
I'm so used to seeing him back there, I wouldn't even think anybody being...
Yeah, he's here, he's back.
Okay.
I guess people, other people besides myself, read the letter to the editor from Kelly Caldwell, and Miss Caldwell had stopped by my house several weeks ago and talked about the pool at Jennifer Hills, and requested that if that's the way we're going to go, that it needs to be lap length, fifty meters. And, so I'm thinking about what she's, if we're going to go that route, I think that she has a valid, some valid points. But I also have a question. So, tonight, we're going to approve the professional services agreement. Before we know what the state's going to do, are we going to be out any money that we could lose? If, if we proceed this way, and then the state determines, the state determines it's going to go in fifty percent, whatever, we talked about fifty percent at our last meeting, is this money just flushed away?
This would be...
With this?
The way it would be engineered, if we could put this at the facility with an indoor center or standalone, is the way it's going to be engineered.
I just don't want to waste any money before we know what we want to do. Okay. And I know those people from, that the Parks people are here...
And Mr. Branstad is here too, if you have specific technical questions, not to put you on this, but I'm sure that's why...
What is the size of, what is the size of the pool that we're talking about at Jennifer Hills?
Do you want to have Mr. Parrish come forward and answer?
Uh, yes.
So, that way people can hear the response.
It's twenty-five meters, and is that about half the length of what we have now?
You have a fifty-meter pool right now.
Fifty-meter.
And so, that's what we need.
You need a competition pool.
Yes.
Twenty-five meters is not a competition pool.
Thank you. What you'd be approving tonight is, is the architectural design to move forward. What's on the board now is a conceptual plan. This would be an actual design that could be used at any site in the city, no matter where, where it goes. We're recommending Jennifer Hill if that, if that proceeds and works out. But what we'll have to do is look at it and see twenty-five, you're talking about the lap pool, twenty-five or fifty meters, we'll be looking at the lazy river, we'll be looking at all the components to put in the design. So, there's nothing specific right now.
You'll be looking at fifty and twenty-five meters.
We'll be looking at all, all different designs.
I think we need to go with fifty meters. I think that we need a lap pool. Wherever this facility, if it's going to be rehabbing Jennifer Hills or going into something bigger, it needs to be...
Well, and twenty-five, twenty-five meter is lap pool, it's just shorter.
Well, I think we need a longer one.
But the, so, anyway, that's, that's, that's things we'll take into consideration in doing the design. And once again, to reiterate, the design can be placed anywhere.
Okay.
Do you have further, Commissioner Bowers?
I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Commissioner Roach? Go ahead. And then Commissioner Roach.
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Bowers, for, for asking to this to get moved. That, I think it's very important that the public understands that we, it's not just that we have two things coming at us, but we have two things that could work together. That the conceptual design of Jennifer Hills Park, this money that we're going to put right now for this design phase, again, to reiterate what you said, can be moved to either place. My question, Mayor, is, do we need a vote tonight to support the letter, the draft My question, Mayor, is, do we need a vote tonight to support the letter, the draft letter, towards Swim Play Frankfurt?
We can do that, if you wanna make it official, I thought we actually had already said we would, but if you would like to, if, if we need to have clarification.
We asked for a draft, but we never voted on the letter that was presented to us.
We had a letter.
Did, did you all see the letter that the, was the letter?
We sent it last week.
Yeah.
Was the letter okay with anybody, or anybody have suggestions on changes?
I don't have any suggestions on the changes, I'm, I'm okay with, with voting for it to go.
Okay, we could, if you wanna make a form, we can, if you just make a motion, we'll approve that.
Okay, we can do that, I guess after this.
I think that works.
You can do it now, if you want to.
I don't want to right now.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Give me just a minute.
Okay.
But I think the most important thing that we need to, we need to look at as well, if, is if we're going to ask the state money, and the state, even if they say no, if we're going together with the county, at the end of the day, I think we still need to work with the county to maybe build something more than a five million dollar pool, that maybe we could build an entity together within our community, this won't be a twenty-five million dollar facility, but we might be able to do a ten million dollar facility that could provide a little bit more for our community, because if we provide for our community, our community gains confidence through outlets, whether it's through playing baseball, if it's through playing soccer, if it's through singing, if we provide something that allows people to gain confidence, they come back to Frankfurt and they spend their money there, um, so I'm just asking that, even if we find out come February, the state doesn't give money, maybe we should still look at working with the county to build something bigger.
Would you all like us to direct this, the city manager to work with, uh, to contact county officials, to ask them if they could?
Mm-hmm. Cause I still don't know, and I don't know if the rest of the commission knows, if, if they're still in for the twenty-five percent, so what was presented to us was that the city would provide twenty-five percent, the county would provide twenty-five percent, and the state would provide fifty percent for the funding of the twenty-five million dollar facility, that was, that was the breakdown that's given to us, so even if they can't handle that fifty percent, maybe the twenty-five, twenty-five can carry a hundred percent of something less.
Okay.
Um, and I do appreciate the, the work Bran, Branstad or Carroll has done, I, don't, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to knock Juniper Hills Pool, but if we're at a critical moment of saying that something's right there in front of you, and you can get it, sometimes it's worth trying to get, even if you can't touch it. It's nice to be a risk player at times.
Do, do you wanna make your motion, or just wait till we finish discussing?
Like, for Commissioner Roach to discuss, and then you can make a motion.
I think everybody, it's hard when you've got two things going on, even if they're not mutually exclusive, for everybody to keep doing what they're doing, so I appreciate everybody in that, um, I understand from what you're saying, Jim, that when you, when you all come together with some designs, you'll have a couple of perhaps different ones, but obviously, if you, and I'm not, I don't know whether we need a twenty-five meter or fifty meter, and I, and I also have talked to, to Kelly, grew up with her, but I assume if you go fifty meters, it's gonna cost more money.
Or you'll have to retract on some other things.
So, so.
You'll have to make things.
So we'll have to make decisions.
We'll have to make decisions.
Based on, but, a couple of quick questions, on this design, could, could it also be placed in the county, let's say, for example, we discover that, that we get all this, we get, get the funding, and we do swim play, and we do put it in the county as opposed to the city, could you put the same plan in the county?
That's the idea of the conceptual design.
I don't know why you couldn't.
Okay, so, just wanna check that.
Some type of, uh, no, rule against your funding, or something, the city funding, or something like that.
Okay.
Just do a local agreement.
I don't have any other questions, except, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. Is there any more question while Mr. Hayden's up?
Yeah. Well, first of all, I, I wanna say thank you for all your work, and I definitely support that we go forward with the site survey, the analysis, and the design, because I've seen, and this has been on the table for a long time, but I, I think at this point, we need this kind of information in front of us as soon as possible, because I actually saw your book back in January two thousand and three of your plan, and I see a lot of things have been accomplished, and some things are still, you know, is always on the bubble, but what we're doing tonight, my thought is that we definitely need to go on and get this going, uh, we can only speculate about what's gonna happen at the state, I think we have a good plan going forward, uh, it may not be the dollar figures that have been thrown around, we don't know that, but at the same time, if you have a plan, you know, that plan can be modified, uh, you know, to fit, you know, the needs, and we'll find out a little bit later on about other approvals, but I appreciate your work, and I appreciate the, this organization that's been working with you for quite a while.
Well, and you need to appreciate the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, your board did a lot, lot of work, so they, they worked really hard.
Okay.
Do you wanna make a motion?
You may.
Mayor, I think we have two motions to make, though.
Okay.
I think one motion would be to accept nine point one as presented on the consent calendar, and the second motion would be.
Just do one at a time.
Yes, but the second motion would be to approve for the Swim Play Frankfurt letter that was drafted to us to move forward to go to the state.
Okay, you can make those as one motion, if you'd like.
I, I would prefer two motions.
Okay.
I have, we'll have some questions.
Okay, well, Commissioner.
May I ask a question, and then she can decide how she wants to do her motion.
Um, well, since she was, I wasn't sure if she was making a motion, if she was, that was gonna take.
I was just trying to clarify that I believe that there were two motions that need to be made.
Okay, well, Commissioner Bowers, you have a question, would, did you wanna direct it to Commissioner, to a Commissioner?
To whoever, so the, the letter goes to the state, and the state, um, commits to X amount, then there's still room to negotiate exactly what that plan is gonna look like?
That's my understanding.
And the dollar figure on our end is, do we have any commitment from the county right now?
No, we do not.
Do you?
They're, they're ready to sign.
They're ready to sign, and our, and our dollar commitment would be?
Three hundred thousand.
Well, we're, I think our city manager is gonna come back to see if three hundred thousand or five hundred thousand was feasible, uh, or some.
We put three hundred thousand in the letter, because that was the amount that we can afford without a tax increase, or tax, or, uh, service cuts.
Or cutting out positions.
Correct.
Mm-hmm, and possibility of land.
Possibility of land.
I suggest we put two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars in possibility of land in the language.
The land is not in the letter, but it can certainly be added.
You know, I, I'd like to keep it clean and leave the land out of it, I mean, if land wants to substitute in lieu of, uh, some three hundred, you know, I, I don't wanna give all of our land away for nothing.
Well, the land we're talking about, we gave away for a dollar.
Well.
And so that would be if it reverts back to us by two thousand and fifteen for that same dollar, then we, but.
Can we leave the letter as it is, just for now, we, we're gonna be negotiating anyway, this is not the end of it.
Well, it'd be up to the, to whatever you all want in the letter, is, is what we're gonna do.
Well, I may that we, um, accept nine point one.
Okay, move back, Commissioner Bowers, second, nine point one. Second, second, back, Commissioner Haynes, any discussion?
So this is the one where we're just.
The conceptual design.
Conceptual design, okay, I'm with you.
Is it a second?
Second.
We already had a second. This was discussion, okay, any other discussion, or questions? Okay, just to clarify, this is accepting nine point one, which is the schematic design for a family, we'll call it Juniper Hills Aquatic Center is what the agenda item is, that's just the short title. Okay, clerk, please call her.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Mayor May.
Uh, yes, nine point one is approved, and now, Commissioner Hayden, did you wanna make a motion on the letter?
Yes, may I please, Mayor?
Please.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the draft letter that was presented to us regarding Swim Play Frankfurt, to have them move it forward.
Move back, Commissioner Hayden, second back, Commissioner Haynes, any discussion?
I do have another question.
Commissioner Bowers.
Have we, I think I heard in the meeting, the work session, the special meeting, we still don't know, Commissioner Roach brought up the maintenance costs, what I heard that night was, these facilities oftentimes don't break even, so should we go? I don't wanna do anything that doesn't break.
The pool bill's not gonna break even.
I don't wanna do anything that doesn't break even, um, or better, because we talk about we're bringing money into Frankfurt, and Mr. Stonebow, I know lots of people go out of town and go to things in state, I was in a three-day conference last week in Lexington and came home every night to eat and go to sleep, not everyone that comes to a city stays to eat, I happen to like my restaurants here and know many of the restaurant owners, so I don't, what I'm saying is, are we talking about a profitable venture, are we talking about a break even, are we talking about a lose money?
Okay.
And I need to know what we're talking about.
All right, that's, that's why the.
Before the final thing comes, I can, I can say let's send, I can vote to send the letter, there's still room for negotiation, but I will not be for something that's gonna cost, that's, the taxpayers are gonna keep getting drained for thirty, forty, and fifty years on down the road, if we're talking about something that we think is gonna be profitable, I'd like to see some research that shows us, yes, indeed, the majority of people do stay in the towns, the cities, and eat and sleep, because I'm not sure that that's the case, I know that every time I've traveled out of, out of my city to another city, I return home to do those things, so I'm not sure that everyone does those things, um, and I think, go ahead.
No, I think you're exactly right, Commissioner Bowers, and that's why the letter we're sending has six questions in it, which, which will answer most of the things you've asked, but not all of them, but it'll answer enough of them, so that if, if we come back with data that doesn't support those things you're talking about.
Have the letter read for the public, and, and to refresh it as well?
Did you read it? Here's a copy of it.
I, I would like it read for the public, I want people to know what we're doing, it was said that I don't support my city, in the paper, and under the cartoon, and I'm here to tell you, I most certainly do support my city, I come back to Frankfurt from conferences to eat, I come back to sleep, um, and my way of supporting the city might not be the same way as someone else would, but I think the public needs to know exactly what we're voting on, and I'm just saying, I can support something if, um, I think it is gonna help the city, I think the comment that I made the other night in the meeting was that I'm not about building something that's gonna bring nothing into the city, but more traffic and smog, and lessen our quality of life, if we can show that it will break even and provide a facility for our own residents to use, because what we also talked about the other night was a regional facility to bring in tournaments, I'm not about spending my city, citizens' tax dollars for other people to come here, if indeed, our citizens are not gonna benefit from that, so I think all of those conversations will happen after this point, but I want the citizens to know what I'm thinking about when I'm considering this issue, um, I don't think that just having a facility is necessarily the best thing for people, unless I know exactly what we're gonna do with that, um, is it really gonna be available for our citizens to use, or do we expect it to be occupied with tournaments from other places, I have a hard time believing that it would be occupied for tournaments from other places, when I see our convention center down here not occupied a lot with tournaments from other places, so those are just some questions that I'm thinking about, I think we need to think through all of that before we talk about spending this kind of money, um, but, um, if.
He's got the, I'm gonna let the commis, um.
Sure, so the public knows what this is, what we're talking about doing.
I'm gonna read it for you.
This letter is addressed to Mr. Brad Thomas, and it reads, "The Board of Commissioners of the City of Frankfurt hereby provides this letter of support, indicating its formal support for Swim Play Frankfurt's concept to build an indoor sports facility in Franklin County, Frankfort, that is three hundred thousand square foot in size, and which will have multiple indoor courts, and areas for a number of different sports activities, including basketball, tennis, and volleyball, as well as an aquatic center. The Board of Commissioners is willing to consider a financial commitment of this conceptual project in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars per year, subject to the successful review of the following information: detailed information concerning the cost of the structure, detailed information concerning the cost to operate and maintain the facility, detailed information concerning the cost of the facility's site, as well as site preparation, realistic revenue projections, the form of the entity that will own, operate, and maintain the facility, and the financial commitments to be made by the state and county government, as well as other local entities such as the YMCA to support the project. Once this information is provided to the city, a further review of this plan can be completed. Please keep the city advised of the project, uh, progress on Swim Play Frankfurt's plan, and feel free to contact me for members, or members of the Board of Commissioners to discuss this matter further. Sincerely, William, I, May, Mayor of Frankfurt."
Is there, okay, if there's no further discussion, ask for the clerk to call her up, did you have other questions first? Okay.
Mr. Roach?
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Roach.
Sorry, I need to be faster.
It's all right.
What did the county commit?
Do you, do you wanna come forward?
It's ready to commit, you said.
Or what, are they prepared to commit if, if a variety of factors occur?
And although we know you, would you mind just stating your name on the record, so the, so the city clerk will have it.
Brad Thomas, representing Swim Play Frankfurt, uh, the county, twice, has discussed Swim Play Frankfurt in their budget cycles, and both times have committed five hundred thousand dollars to those budget cycles.
Okay.
The, the reason why it was five hundred thousand, they wanted to start getting used to putting that amount into their budgets, they've always earmarked that amount and set it aside, and it's sitting there waiting for an opportunity for this building.
So they committed to continue the five hundred thousand dollar set aside?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, and thank you for your work, and all the other members of the Swim Play Committee, and for all the young people that I see tonight, thank you all for being here, we do listen to you, and also thank you for the emails, on behalf of everyone on the commission, they all have said how much they appreciate hearing from the folks that are gonna use it, especially the young people, so we are very happy to, to see you all here, and if there's no further, call the, please call her up.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Uh, yes, nine point one is approved, next was nine point two, which was formerly seven point two, it's the, the, um, information on the season pass and daily reg fee, so some questions, Commissioner, commissioners have questions, or any of our staff, Commissioner Roach, did you?
Jim still here?
I'm just standing up here.
Oh, hey, hey, you doing?
I'm gonna go back to the stage.
Thanks, you're sharp, um.
And we also have Kirk Schuley, our golf pro, with us.
You know, I, I really just have a, um, I guess I don't, I don't have a, after talking a little bit with staff, what, what I would, what I would ask for, if there's commission support, I, it looks like four years ago, or five years ago, you all came up with a five-year plan in order to reduce the amount of deficit in the golf course, and, and you've done a great job, I, I would like for the staff, Jim and Kirk and some others, to get involved, and see if you couldn't, if there's commission support to get a new five-year plan, that tries to lower the deficit to a hundred thousand dollars, which would take us from about three, you know, we tend to run about two ninety to about three eleven, and that would give us an extra two hundred thousand dollars in revenue for the city budget, and I think with some, perhaps some people really working hard, that maybe can be done, we're still, we still appear to be, um, much lower in cost to play there than a lot of our surrounding places, and I know that's a benefit, that drives more traffic, but it's still a, something that we, that the community is subsidizing, which I think it should, I just would rather it subsidized at a hundred thousand instead of three hundred thousand, so I was wondering if there's commission support to see if they could come up with a new five-year plan that would close that gap further than it is now.
Anybody wanna come in?
Well, I'm actually not, not sure that a five-year plan is, is a question, I, I guess I misunderstood, I was thinking that, uh, it was a fee thing of, I've seen the plan, and the fee structure, and what's expected, I know you can't jump the price up too much, unless you're gonna lose some business, uh, just because everybody's, and you have a lot of nice tournaments there, so, um, at this particular point, I'm, I'm just not sure that, uh, the, the plan is what is needed, so, I apologize, I like your thoughts, I just, I'm not sure what I will be supporting or not supporting, so.
Well, you don't have to support anything, you know, if, if we don't, if y'all don't like the plan, you don't have to, we don't have to do it, I'm just saying, if, if we got that big of a deficit, I mean, I'm fine if we wanna talk about raising the fees more than ten dollars, I just thought this might be a way, since it's kind of the twelfth hour, and that, and that they, they go on sale December first, I think, and today's November twenty-fifth, that that may not be possible to do more than the already announced ten dollars in fees, but if we're raising ten dollars in fees, we're basically raising a couple of percentage points a year, when the surrounding areas, it's much, it's more expensive, and there may be things we can do with capital projects, or with labor costs, I don't know, so that's why I thought that it might fit here.
And, and let me get a clarification, the last five-year plan, what was that year? I have two thousand and three, so did you have another one?
Oh, yes, no, it was, what, two thousand?
We're in about the fourth year, this is the fourth year.
It's the fourth year, just finishing.
And it was a five-year plan?
And we've, we've reduced expenditures, our, from our budget, a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, and of course, revenues fluctuate due to weather a little bit, and we had, uh, several, a year or two there, about four hundred and twenty-five thousand coming in, so we're still on that, we're still on that, uh, plan, but we can, can take a look at aggressively, you know, moving a little bit toward if the commission wishes to, uh, I don't think we can do it all at once, you know, like that, just due to the longevity and the way things have gone, but, uh, we'll certainly be glad to, to come up with a structural plan.
I would support you, you know, looking at that aggressive plan.
Okay.
You know, if, I don't know.
That's all I'm asking.
What is the current, I'm sorry, what is the current green fee right now?
Twenty-two.
And the season pass price?
The, um, season passes for individuals currently are four forty, um, and we have various categories, probably half of our members, season pass membership right now are retired seniors, which begins at age sixty.
which begins at age 60. Those fees currently are 355 for a seven-day fee and 275 for a senior weekday, which allows them to play just during the week. And then they were just proposing a $10 raise on those. Again, you know, one thing too, Commissioner, is again, one of the areas we're always really trying to focus to on increasing the daily greens fee play and whatnot, too. So that's an area where we're really going to stress growth in 2014. We kind of examine some of our daily play schedules and some of the slower times, possibly offering some specials to try to get the course filled up through those times, too.
If I can just add on. Do you guys already do like a flex play type schedule? So depending on what time of the day you're out there, the price is different? Or have you guys ever looked at that?
We have a nine-hole rate and 18-hole rate, depending on how much golfers want to play. We have off-season winner rates. We are on a couple of the, we're on like the state loan card and Kentucky PGA card, which gives a discount. But one thing we have looked at this year is, you know, sometimes afternoons, particularly in the summertime, you know, that can be a little bit of a slower time. Our mornings are pretty full, but there's, I think there's some opportunity for some off-time price discounts, which may get some daily greens fee play.
Yeah, or just kind of maybe shift some more people out there. I mean, maybe just something else to look at when you guys start looking at this.
And there is one other thing to consider, like when we talk about quality of life facilities, as we've been talking about stuff. It's a tourism dollar in the turning of the, you know, like for charitable events and the functions that you see out there and the money it raises for the community and what it does for the benefits and people, you know, have a lot of out-of-town players and tournaments that people stay and different things. But the tourism dollar is not generated in your dollar-for-dollar deal and that, too. But we will be glad to look at another five-year plan and implement it and talk to you all about it.
Thank you.
Is that all right with everybody?
It's good with you. Thank you so much for everything you have to say.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Now, any further discussions on item 9.2?
I have one more old business, if that's okay?
We've got 9.2 yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Unless you don't want to.
I do.
But we probably need to, since it's time sensitive.
Yes.
No, there's no motion for 9.2.
There's no motion. You make a motion.
I make a motion, we approve 9.2.
By Commissioner Roach.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Haddon. Now, is there any discussion?
I just had a quick question, Jim, where'd you go? Oh, what, how long would y'all, how long do you think you need to come up with a new five-year plan?
We could get over the winter months, the first of March.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any others? That's okay. All right, clerk, please call her over.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, 9.2 is approved. Next item, a new business, 10.1, this is approved amendment number...
More old business?
Sorry.
I think Commissioner Haddon had another old business.
Thank you.
And I got a couple. Thank you.
Ready?
Go ahead.
I had some more people contact me in regard to the streets, by the way. I think the streets downtown on St. Clair and Wapping Street, I think they look great. I've ran the corners there on Main Street, and it was so nice that first time I ran past that crosswalk that actually, you know, the lines were parallel to each other, it was great. Good work, thank you, thank you all so much. But I did have some phone calls and an email regarding the sidewalk on the rest of St. Clair and at the bridge and Wapping at the corner, if that part was going to get bumped out a couple inches. I know that the original people asked that it goes out, I think about a foot. But I didn't know if that part was still going to get bumped out a couple inches for pedestrian safety.
Public Works Director Bradley can answer your question.
Thank you. Just trying to get the public to know on the Capitol 10. Thank you.
Are you talking about the southwest corner where Wapping intersects with St. Clair?
On the bridge side.
On the bridge side, yes. And beside the old library?
Yes.
Yes. The current plan is to, in the contract we gave him to go ahead today to start there.
Okay.
We had him stop so we could pave and get that, because that's weather-sensitive.
Yes.
The plant's closed, we have to get that down. The plan is to, on that corner, is to bump it out, to come out about 10 or 11 feet out from where it is now, have a ramp with the detectable warning going across.
Okay.
Wapping, and then left going across the alley that goes down to the boat ramp.
Okay.
That will be striped, and we're also going to make that out of concrete going across that alley so that the driver seeing black and they'll see that section there, it'll be upgraded, but it'll be concrete, so it'll be visually, it'll be different. And so they'll kind of see that as a continuance of the walkway.
Right.
So that's on the plan to do.
Weather permitting?
Hopefully he'll start tomorrow, but I, you know, we've given him the go-ahead to finish that part. The other thing we need to do is up on Main Street and St. Clair, we are going to stripe with double white lines the crosswalks, and then come back in the spring and hot stamp that and fill that in with, the plan is to make it look like brick and it'll be coated with a red brick, so it kind of ties it into St. Clair. But it's not actual brick, it's still asphalt, it's that. But before then, we will, when the strippers come back to town, we'll get the crosswalks put back in.
Great, well, thank you. And great work to your department as well. It looks really good down there, I think.
They worked very hard on this thing, thank you.
It's really good. Thank you for the update. That's all I have.
Do you have any old business? If not, new business?
I got a couple.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right. I've asked a couple of times and just wanted to see where maybe we were on the, you know, we've got, we've got properties that people, where people haven't paid their taxes for a number of years, so that, and some of them are here, and then there's more than that. I think there's 120 to 140 properties where people haven't paid their taxes for three years or more. So I guess the questions for us are, I think we, I think staff's been looking at whether or not to sell some of those off to investors who would then try to get the tax revenue, or they would, or they just pick and choose some of them. I think also we've talked about foreclosure for people that haven't been paying their taxes. So, and we had talked about somebody doing a cost-benefit analysis. And so I, and then adding to that, there are also people that haven't paid fees, et cetera, over a long period of time, that also fall into that same kettle of fish as far as possible foreclosures. And then also related to that is we have people that don't pay their taxes or don't pay their fees that then continue to get permits and things of that nature, which doesn't seem to make any sense. So, long question, but where are we on that?
You want me to?
Go ahead, please.
I'll take a shot at some of that, and Steve may need to jump in. With respect to taxes, of course, we did send out letters to the folks that had not paid their taxes in the summer, and that brought in some additional tax revenue. I've got three foreclosure complaints that I'm getting ready to file, that, you know, we try and pick the ones that are the most obvious, and those will be filed this week with respect to delinquent taxes. I was not inclined to file a whole bunch at once. I think if you file several and the word starts getting out that the city is going to file foreclosure actions against the folks that aren't paying their taxes, then that may have a motivational impact on those that aren't paying their taxes. I know that Mr. Dawson, the finance director, has had some conversations with a, with the county and some other folks about the possibility of the city selling its tax bills and then the folks that buy the tax bills would then file the foreclosure actions. I think that the city commission needs to take a long, hard look before they go that program, because that method is, I've been involved in that on both sides of the aisle, and that can be a very onerous process for any property owner to go through. And I've seen it be kind of a cottage industry to impose unreasonable fees on the people that have mistakenly failed to pay their tax bills and then all of a sudden realize that instead of having to pay a $1,000 tax bill, they have to pay a $3,500 bill, which includes taxes, administrative fees, legal fees, et cetera. And if you all want to discuss that at a city commission meeting, I can certainly discuss that in detail. With respect to, so that's where we are on the property taxes. With respect to the property maintenance code liens, if you'll recall, there's a 60-day moratorium on, on tax, excuse me, on interest and penalties. So if someone owes a property maintenance code lien, then letters have gone out to those folks advising them of the fact that a lien exists on the property. That information was provided to my office by Mr. Mueller's office, so those letters have gone out. In the process of those letters going out, some people have contacted my office and said, you know, "Hey, I don't think this lien exists." And so we take a look at it in some cases, because the property has been, through a foreclosure sale, the lien has been washed out, if you will, through the foreclosure process. But in any event, the letters have been sent and there has been publicity on the moratorium on penalty and interest on the property maintenance code lien. In addition, I'm having one person in my office who's making calls to the people that, whose names have been given to us by Mr. Mueller's department, to make sure that they're aware of that, even though the notice was provided and even though it was publicized, just to make sure that people know they have that opportunity to pay off their property maintenance code lien at this time without paying the penalty and interest. I will say that so far, there hadn't been a great deal of interest by anyone wanting to pay the liens that exist against their property.
Is it safe to say that something in the neighborhood of $340?
Or $340,000?
$340,000 that we've had, how much have we had come in?
I don't know at this point.
Is this Mr. Mueller?
Yes, that was in the weekly update last week. We had three properties that paid their liens. And that was the price, I believe, that was accurate. And if I may, with your question, I provided, just give you this sheet. The red indicate, these are the abandoned property lists, it's on our websites, it's on there as y'all have requested. But what I've added is a shade, shaded color. The shaded color are properties that have property liens, property maintenance code liens. In addition to being abandoned properties, there's 20 of the 61 properties. Another 61 properties, 45 are delinquent tax. And if you turn the page, it actually identifies the lien amount. Again, this means highlight in yellow, these are all of our property maintenance liens that are outstanding. Yellow means they are abandoned property also.
I guess then in light of all this, could, if there's commission support, could we, kind of like on the parks thing, could we move a little more aggressively toward foreclosing on more properties in order to, and looking more at the other possibility of selling those off and learn more from city attorney about the downsides to that? But, you know, we have some properties that are like nine, that, you know, that they're, we have, we may have six or $7 million worth of properties that haven't been paying their property taxes for three years. We have some people that owe tens of thousands of dollars. So, you know, rather than just carrying them on the rolls until we finally, I think there's a 10-year, whatever the statute is, however that works, Rob, I'm sure you know what it is.
On property tax?
There's a, and then end up not getting anything. I think we need to be a lot more aggressive, get our money. If they're not going to pay us, take the property over and sell it and have more funds for the city to use. This is all part of a larger idea, which is to improve the housing stock in Frankfurt, to make people more willing to want to put money in Frankfurt. And then it's not fair if 90-something percent of us are paying our taxes and the other 4% or 5% aren't, they don't pay it every year, and you see the same people's names every year. So I'd just like to get support to move faster and more aggressive.
If I may, Mayor?
Go ahead.
I think one thing that might need to take place is, for how many years some of this stuff is going on? I got a phone, I got an email from someone, and I shared it with Gary and others in regard to, he had bought a house, and he said he had everything checked, which, you know, sometimes things don't show up. But he got a bill from Mr. Moore's office for something that happened in 2000, and this house has had three owners. And now he's the one getting the bill because he's the current property owner. And maybe something else in the system needs to get looked at, too.
There is no check in the system, to the best of my knowledge, on foreclosures and on bankruptcies. So for example, looking at this list here, I already see three or four people that have gone through a bankruptcy proceeding. With respect to foreclosures, there probably needs to be some better coordination on foreclosures, because normally what happens in a foreclosure is that the property sold at the courthouse steps. If there are property, if there are, if there are property tax issues, then those monies are usually paid to finance. The master commissioner sends a check for the delinquent property tax to finance. Finance credits that to the homeowners, to that piece of property. Of course, that person no longer owns it because it's gone through the foreclosure process. But there's, you know, I don't know what efforts were taken years ago to collect property maintenance code liens, so.
It doesn't sound like much. It doesn't sound like much was taken to collect.
Well, I think they tried, they just don't pay.
And there is the issue of whether, you know, how much do you, do you want to file a lawsuit for $200 and then try and chase the owner and locate a servant, take his deposition for $100?
I think you're exactly right, Mr. City Attorney. I think, and I think Commissioner Haddon is exactly right. But what needs to occur now is it just needs to get done, which is we need to coordinate it, figure out if there's somebody that, you know, shouldn't, that owes 200 from two previous owners, just write it off and move on down the road, figure out what we need to do administratively to write that off. I think you'll largely find those are property maintenance code things that didn't get caught when the closing, like you're saying, when they're foreclosed, they don't look at that type of thing. So, but, but I think we need to, and I know we've been doing all these things, but let's, let's go ahead and do a cost-benefit analysis and even further. And if we've got 120 to 140 properties that haven't paid taxes for three years, I can't imagine that there aren't 40 or 50 of them that we could recover. And if we can't get the taxes, we can get the property. Because I guarantee you, if they haven't paid their property taxes for three years, it's probably a good correlation that they don't, that it's in bad shape and it's, and that there's a number of other problems besides just not paying their property taxes.
You all ready to move on? Next, new business, 10.1. This relates to the Crestwood project. It's to prove amendment number two to an engineering agreement with CDM Smith for evaluation preliminary engineering associated with Crestwood INI Reduction Project.
Did you stop?
That was it.
Oh.
If you have questions, I mean, we have our, we have Mr. Scap here from wastewater treatment plants through department to answer technical questions. The total amount is, with amendment number two and number one together now would be, with the base contract, the total amount would be $288,919.
Remove approval.
Move by Commissioner Bowers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Haddon. Second by Commissioner Haynes. Any discussion? See none, clerk, please call her up.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hedin?
Yes.
Mayor may.
Yes, 10.1 is approved. Next item, 10.2. This relates to a grant for fire department to replace the aerial truck that was purchased in 2001. And it would be to authorize the city to file a grant for the 2013 DHS FEMA AFG grant funds and authorize the mayor to execute any necessary documents. It's possible that we could get this grant, but because of the information that I have, and Chief Hedin is here to answer any questions, it would be probably real iffy if we get it, but we thought it's better to go ahead and ask than to pass on it. If not, we'll still have to look at, either we pay for the full replacement cost to purchase a new aerial or refurbish. I think it's probably better, my opinion, would be to replace the full apparatus rather than to refurbish it because of the cost. If, on the long one, we'll get more life out of the, out of the truck if, if we, if we buy a new truck versus refurbishing. We typically get about 20 years out of, out of our apparatus, and I keep telling a truck, but it's a, it's a quint, which is, some people call them fire trucks. But anyway, it's a 75-foot ladder truck that, that we're going to request funding for. It will need to be replaced. My understanding is we're requesting the grant, just, just to be prudent and go after every dollar we can.
I move for approval for 10.2.
Move by Commissioner Haynes, second by, did I hear a second? Sorry. Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion?
So, this vote doesn't?
No, it does not, like I said.
Doesn't obligate us to purchase, correct?
This is just requesting the grant for the full amount.
Just application.
Yes. I was just giving that background, I'm sorry. Too much information. Uh, any others? Hey, clerk, please call her up.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hedin?
Yes.
Mayor may.
Yes. Sorry, skipped the bottom. Next is 10.3, to authorize the mayor to sign a transportation agreement with the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services General Insurance Trust. And this would be for liability and property insurance through KLC's self-insured retention group. And, let's see, there's no financial impact. So, if there's any questions, we have Kathy Fields, our HR director, here to answer any questions. If not, we'll entertain a motion unless there's questions.
I move for approval.
Move by Commissioner Haynes?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hedin. Any discussion?
Is it the best deal, based on competing, using, using KLC? Is it cheaper?
Do we?
I couldn't remember. Okay, that's right. I couldn't remember.
If no more discussion, please call her up.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hedin?
Yes.
Mayor may.
Yes, 10.3 is approved. Our next item relates to the failure of the Bynare pump station and it would authorize the Ward of a Soul Source Contract, this is ILM Dewatering Solutions Incorporated, to purchase a Godwin power pack and control panel from the sewer department's Godwin Bat Pest Pump and authorize the mayor to sign all documents associated with the purchase. This is, as a result of a July 4th event. Okay, and as the city manager, this is less expensive than buying a diesel?
The diesel that we've been purchasing.
Using? Any questions? Everybody's kind of...
I'll make, we authorize.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Bowers, second by Commissioner Roach. See none, further discussion, clerk, please call her up.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hedin?
Yes.
Mayor may.
Uh, yes, 10.4 is adopted. Next, item 10.5 deals with stormwater utility feasibility study that's been undergoing discussion with the city and the county, and it would be to consider approval of amendment number two to professional services agreement with URS Corporation for consulting services for phase three of a feasibility study associated with the creation of a stormwater utility. If there may be discussion on this or questions?
Just have a quick comment. I, I think the challenge is, once you've spent the amount of money we have, you're kind of into it, until you find out where, where they go all the way on this study, and they're, they're just about at the end to where it comes to the commission, having been involved in this somewhat. So, I, I, I think we really don't have much choice.
Any other questions or comments?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Move by Commissioner Roach, second by Commissioner Hedin. Any further discussion? See none, clerk, please call her up.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hedin?
Yes.
Mayor may.
Yes, 10.5 is adopted. Next item is 10.6. This is to approve an agreement for 2013 to 14 with the Kentucky Changers Project. For those that may or may not be familiar with Kentucky Changers, it's a group of folks that come to the community and work on housing projects for low-income owners. And it's a very good program. Glad to see that they're back. And I think we're going to provide up to, I think it's a cap of up to $14,000. And of course, if there's a need for changes, we can always authorize that. But this, this limits it to the city to provide materials and supplies up to $14,000. And we have money in the account.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Roach, I'm not sure who's seconded it first.
Commissioner Haynes.
Commissioner Haynes? Second by Commissioner Haynes. Any discussion? Clerk, please call her up.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hedin?
Yes.
Mayor may.
Yes. 10.5 is adopted. Is there any, Commissioner Hedin?
We need to discuss December's work schedule for our meetings.
It was discussed earlier, the city manager sent a note that December 23rd would be the regularly scheduled meeting, and there's some concern that members would, would not be able to, to be here on that date. So, that being said, we could either do the ninth?
Ninth work session, Roger.
Or the 16th.
I voted that we have the, our voting meeting on December 16th.
I second.
And work meeting on the ninth?
Yes.
We can just do it, if there's no objection. I'm sorry, well, there's a motion, a second. All those in favor, signal a 100. Those opposed, like sign. Okay, I see. And agenda items, since that's going to be a work, a special meeting, if there are, of course, I'll support putting anything on the agenda. Just if you have agenda items, you can just send it to city clerk and/or city manager.
It's a special meeting.
We'll put, we'll put whatever you want.
I don't know if the draft for the human rights?
We can do that if you want to.
And then we could have a vote on it?
We could do a, we could do a first meeting, a first reading on the ninth, and then do a second on the 16th, and go faster if you want to.
Makes sense, because we're going to get people on. Makes sense.
If you want to mention the ninth, we can.
I had it down, but I was waiting for y'all.
So, we'll add, one agenda item, we'll do a first reading on December 9th and a second reading on December 16th to change the ordinance on, in terms of board appointments for, for the local human rights.
So, we'll have to have a special meeting on the ninth, since you don't hold it at work sessions.
We can, we can do that upon a, well, no, you can't say upon a term, that's too iffy. We'll figure out a time, if you want to come in five minutes beforehand, or do it upon, can we say upon recess? Is it better, it's better to do it at a time? I think it's better to do it at a time. We'll do it at a specific time.
So, that's for the first reading?
4:45?
We could do it at 4:55, 5? Five minutes before.
Before the work session?
Before the work session, so it's like five minutes before. Is that okay with you all?
Yes, sir.
Is that why you don't have to really come in that much more faster? And now, it's not going to be in this, the only debatable thing, because we all agree on it, and I don't think anybody in the public's going to come in at the last minute. But we'll make it available, they do. And then, second reading would be December 16th.
I guess you did a special meeting a few minutes before the work session on the ninth.
So, that'll be December 9th at 4:55 PM. A first reading, an ordinance to change the way the appointments are made for human rights. And then, the second reading will be on December the 16th during the special meeting. Was there anything else?
One more thing, just for public notice, is that we had a leaf truck that broke. So, some of the leaves are still out. It's because we're short on trucks, correct?
We've had at least one break.
We had one truck break. So...
We had two running right now.
Well, we have another round in December, correct? Yes. So, if your leaves are there, please be patient with us, I'm sorry.
No, that's good.
Well, should we say happy Thanksgiving?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Move by Commissioner Roach, second by Commissioner Bowers, any discussion? See about, all those in favor, signal a 100. Aye. Opposed, like sign. I just have, you can say happy Thanksgiving.
Commissioner Roach, could I ask you?